Yeah, because once we get in the closed session, they are going to be.
Good morning, everyone. I will bring to order the regular council meeting of April 14th. To session. We have an agenda before us. Additions to the agenda. I'd like to add into closed session 12.2. Third-party business, section 16. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Counselor Christie?
I'll move the agenda as presented or as amended.
Okay, motion's been made to move the agenda as amended. We also have with us on video conferencing two of our counselors, Counselor Kiefer, Counselor Penner. Just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that they are participating in the in-camera or participating in the council meeting through video conferencing. Okay, we have a motion before us. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. We've pre-circulated the regular council minutes of March the 24th. There any errors, omissions, concerns? Counselor King?
I'd make the motion to accept the minutes of the March 24th regular council meeting.
Okay, motion's been made to accept the minutes of the council of March 24th as presented. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. We are going to go to the first agenda item, which is. We are going to go to the first agenda item, which is 5.1, transportation. And anytime you are ready, Mr. Bueckert.
Morning, Mr. Reeve and members of council. 5.11 request for decision. Subject is the cost sharing for the development of undeveloped road allowance, Range Road 22-5. So a little background on this, June of 2018, a ratepayer applied for the cost share road development agreement to upgrade 225 to access his subdivided parcel situated out of southwest of 82922. The roadway in question did have a design for access to a well and needed limited grader work and gravel to give access to the property. A contractor was hired by Neheal County to complete the road development in 2018. The ratepayer did spend a total, did pay for that for a total of 454061 to upgrade that road. At the time of the application, Neheal County's policy allowed consideration for the cost sharing of 50% of the road upgrade when a development permit was applied for. Policies 513 and 513A that were in effect at that time, but are now being replaced by 1339 as of last March of 19, and they're both attached for the reference. In March of 2020, the ratepayer applied for a development permit and now would like to be considered for the cost share of that roadway. Again, the ratepayer spent a total of 454061 to upgrade the road, therefore the county's 50% cost share would be 227031 with funds coming from the operating budget. Council options would be council approves the 227031 cost share with funds coming from the operating expense. Number two would be council receives the information and not fund the cost share of the road upgrade. And number three would council directs administration to provide further information.
Thanks, Brad. Are there any questions from council for Brad? I guess I've got one. The road has been inspected to make sure that it is sufficient, whatever.
Mr. Reeve, the road, the road was, was done, so there was nothing, there was a, for 700 meters of the road, it went to an ATCO well, and there was an additional 100 meters that needed to be updated to get to that, access to that subdivision that was subdivided years ago. But it has been inspected, it's met, it's, it's grass seeded, he did all the grass seed and all that sort of stuff, so.
Okay, so it's built the county's standards, in other words.
Meets the, what the standard was in, in that one was, was it A, a 5.3 meter road? It's a dead end road, it doesn't go anywhere, it goes to a coulee, so.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council? Anyone from video conferencing like to ask a question? Don't see any hands there. What's council's wishes? Deputy Reeve McGee?
I'd like to move that we approved the 2,270 and 31 cents cost share with funds coming from the operating expenses.
Okay, motion has been made to approve a 50% cost sharing. Are there any, is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's not, I will call the question, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
We will move on to 5.3.1, planning. Welcome Ms. Azleton, and anytime you are ready.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So we have brought to you today potential for road closure at Horseshoe Canyon. Currently, Neheal County holds a 3.56 acre title to an area directly south of Horseshoe Canyon that has been fragmented by road plan 834-LK. This parcel contains portions of the parking lot and a small portion of the canyon itself. The existing outhouses are on the boundary of the road allowance. The portion of the undeveloped township road runs through the parking lot, the turnaround, a portion of the canyon, and some of the enhanced trail down to the base. A picture has been included in your package, so you can kind of see that. Administration is proposing that this portion of Township Road 284 be closed and consolidated into the descriptive plan, which is the title that we hold currently. It was created following the realignment of the highway. We are also proposing to close road plan 834-LK, which completely fragments the current title. This will also be consolidated into descriptive plan 0910342, block 1, lot 2. In 2007, Highway 9 was realigned and Alberta Transportation gifted us this parcel. Outhouses were added in 2008 and the parking lot was paved in 2010. Since we do not own the roads, we do not actually own some of the infrastructure that has been developed over time on the site. Closing these roads and consolidating them into the existing plan would enable the land to be utilized more efficiently, and the outhouses could be moved or new ones constructed more feasibly. Currently, they are not in compliance with the setback requirements in the land use bylaw. Consolidating these additional lands would bring the parcel size to approximately 7.5 acres. A real property report would not be required for this property. Administration has requested quotes from three surveyors for this work. Administration has noted the lowest quote in the financial implications, however, it was noted the actual costs could come in lower. So to do a plan of survey here, the cost that we've been quoted is 2860 plus GST. These charges can be accommodated in the existing 2020 operating budget for planning, so there will be no long-term implications to the budget. So planning or administration is recommending that council move to direct us to pursue the road closure and consolidation of a portion of that Township Road 284, which is undeveloped road allowance adjacent to the south end of Horseshoe Canyon, more specifically, the southwest 27, 28, 21, west of 4, and road plan 834-LK into descriptive plan 0910342, block 1, lot 2. The reason we're asking this first is we do have to have the surveyors wording when we create the bylaw, so we do have to get them to do that job prior to us putting it into the wording of the bylaw, otherwise land titles won't accept if we make it up, so.
Thanks. Are there any questions from council for the planner? No questions from those that are video conferencing in? No, alrighty. What are council's wishes? Counselor King?
So I'd, I'd make the motion that council move to direct administration to pursue the road closure and consolidation of a portion of Township Road 284, which is a non-developed road allowance adjacent to the south end of Horseshoe Canyon, and road plan 834-LK into a descriptive plan 0910342, block 1, lot 2.
Thank you, we have a motion before us as on screen. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 5.3.2.
We have another one, very similar. So currently, Keevers Lake Campground is comprised of two separate titles and some improvements that sit in the undeveloped road allowance. Administration is proposing that a portion of Range Road 260 be closed and the entire campground be consolidated into one title. Keevers Lake Campground was originally purchased in 1961. The campground overlapped the quarter section line between two quarters, one owned by Mr. Keever and one by Mr. Hanson. The county purchased both parcels at that time, and an additional two acres of land was added to the Hanson piece in 1986. This parcel is 10.85 acres and the parcel, and the parcel adjacent to the lake is six acres. In 2009, the municipality moved a chalet onto the site to be the office for the park attendants. When dealing with a change of use in the development application for the chalet, it was noted that the chalet was actually located in the middle of the undeveloped road allowance adjacent to the lakefront parcel. Since Neheal County does not own this road allowance, and in order to be in compliance, it is suggested by administration that a portion of this road be closed. This will allow the road to be titled to Neheal County and consolidated into the lakefront parcel. Administration is also proposing that the north parcel be consolidated at the same time, so the entire campground will sit on one title. This is a dead end road as well, that just goes right into the lake. Part of the subdivision process requires a real property report be done verifying the setbacks to the new property lines. The location of the chalet will not meet setback requirements to the road or the east property line. A variance will be required at that time, and will need the approval of the municipal planning commission. Administration has requested quotes from three surveyors for this work, and we have noted the lowest quote in the financial implications. However, it was noted that actual costs could come in lower. It should be noted that the title is currently drawn based on the 1889 lake traverse. We are choosing the option that is a plan of survey based on this traverse. If land titles requires us to reject the 1889 lake traverse, we would have to do the survey based on the current lake boundary. This would increase the price slightly, likely up to 5,000. This would require an approval from Alberta Environment and Parks, which could take up to a year, but can be done concurrently with a proposed road closure, which would be a similar timeframe.
Thanks, Barb. Are there any questions for the planner? Mr. Keever? Think you're muted. You're still muted.
Al.
Yep, you're there, or here.
Okay. I, I was wondering, Barb, by consolidating both parcels onto one title, is that going to create a problem with the people that only have Jason Porter, that are always complaining to me about the things that we're doing over there? And I know, I already know the answer to the next question, but I got to ask it anyways. Why can't you close the whole road?
It, okay, question number one, I don't think, if there are complaints coming in, the use is the same whether we consolidate it or not, whether it sits on two titles or not. So it is a campground. It has been permitted as a campground, so that stays the same. Regarding closing the whole road, anytime we're dealing with water, it becomes very problematic, and because the road dead ends, and it would go through the lake at that portion, we have to stay away from that. And we're trying to avoid having the 1889 traverse, lake traverse rejected, because if we do, if that gets rejected, we have to do it as per the current boundary line. And the lake does not stay the same every year, but right now, the current boundary line, we would lose lands off that south parcel. We would likely, that parcel would likely get reduced to closer to three acres, because the current traverse is under the water. So what that would mean is they would resurvey it based on where the water is today, and then adjust the Queen's title as well as our title to accommodate. And all of that has to be approved through Alberta Environment and Parks. So we don't want to touch anything under the water. We want to try to leave it at that lake boundary and proceed with just the plan of survey, which is the easiest and simplest. The one surveyor that we talked to did feel that they would be allowed to do the plan of survey based on the 1889 traverse, and they did have some conversation with land titles, but at the end of the day, it's whoever actually gets it at land titles that could decide that we want to do this based on today's lake line. So, so anyway, that's why we're staying away from that, closing that whole piece. Hopefully that answers.
Any comments, Glenn?
No, I'm, I'm already through the answer, I just had to ask questions.
Okay. Well, you've got a business opportunity, you can put in a ferry now. Is there any other questions for the planner? What are council's wishes? Counselor Christie?
I'll make the motion to direct administration to pursue the road closure and consolidation of portion of the Range Road 20, 26.0, which is an undeveloped road allowance adjacent to the Keevers Lake Campground.
Thank you, we have a motion before us as presented on the screen. Is there any discussion to the motion? We're good on, okay, we're good there, good there. Alrighty, I will call the question, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, thanks. Our next agenda item is 5.3.3.
Still me.
Welcome back, Ms. Azleton.
Thanks. So this is for the town of Drumheller, Neheal County, intermunicipal development plan. In the spring of 2018, we all know that amendments were made to the municipal government act that we were required to do intermunicipal development plans between all of our municipalities that we have common boundaries with. Bill 25, which came into force December 5th, 2019, replaced the current wording of section 631-2 of the MGA to allow municipalities who mutually agree that an IDP is not necessary to not complete one. However, Neheal County recognizes the value of having an IDP with our urban neighbors, and so we have continued with the process to draft a plan. By implementing a plan that contains both guidelines for future uses as well as agreed dispute mechanisms, urban and rural municipalities can reach agreement without negative impacts on either municipality. From the perspective of both municipalities, enhanced management of the land within the IDP area identified will prove advantageous for the long-term interests of the municipalities and their residents. A proposed draft was created, and administration and the assigned committee from both Neheal County and the town of Drumheller have met to review and revise the proposed draft. The draft that has been attached is the outcome of this review. This draft notes the following objectives: Ensure development and growth occurs in a sustainable and responsible manner. Establish a coordinated approach to development and land use decisions along the shared municipal border. Encourage continued communication between the municipalities. Minimize future land use conflicts. Outline processes for resolving disputes. And provide landowners with greater certainty of potential land use and future development within the plan area. The next step in the process is to provide an opportunity for public comments and feedback. The originally scheduled public hearing in Neheal County was cancelled due to COVID-19. However, the town of Drumheller did adopt the intermunicipal development plan on March 16th, 2020. The length of time we may be impacted and the necessity to reduce gatherings has led to amendments in the legislation, which will allow processes to continue while still protecting the health and safety of ratepayers and staff. These changes have provided opportunities for virtual council meetings as well as other acceptable options for public participation. Administration is proposing that public participation can still be achieved by a letter received prior to noon on May 8th, or via email or similar process during the meeting. All letters or emails received by the cutoff date will be read into the record for council consideration. The public will be able to attend the hearing through live streaming, and staff will advertise the determined method of public accessibility. So we're proposing that council move to schedule the public hearing for the town of Drumneheal IDP to be held on May 12th, 2020 at 10 a.m., and that council move to accept administration's proposal that public participation will be achieved through letters and emails.
Thanks, Barb, are there any questions for the planner? What's council's wishes? Deputy Reeve McGee?
I move to schedule the public hearing as per section 606 of the municipal government act to be held on May 12th, 2020 at 10 a.m.
Okay, we have a motion before us to schedule the public hearing on the 12th of May, 10 a.m. Is there any discussion to that motion? Okay, I don't see any, I'll call the question, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. We have another motion? Counselor Christie, sorry.
I'll make a motion to move, to accept administration's proposal for public participation will be achieved through letters and emails.
Thank you, is there any discussion to that motion? Is there any discussion to that motion? Okay. Seeing's none. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to 6.1 Utility Penalty Deferral Program. Welcome, Bill. I think your mic might be off. I'm not sure. There we go.
Good morning, Reeve and members of council. Before you today is a report from administration dealing with utility payment deferral program. As council is well aware, the province has provided relief to residents in numerous areas. One of them has been in regards to utility payments, mainly dealing with the major gas and utility electric-producing companies that provide those services to residents in the province. Generally, those relief programs have been targeted to those companies that are subject to provincial rate regulation. Municipalities do not fall into that category, but the province has suggested that municipalities follow suit and provide similar relief to utility payments that are provided, and utility payments and services that are provided at the local level. The provincial program today provides for a 30-day deferral on payments. It does not waive payments. The program that administration has put forward before council today is under that same principle, that relief of interest on overdue accounts and non-shutting off of services during that 90-day period would be appropriate. However, that could be another decision point of council, whether they wish to provide more than a 30, 90-day relief, or less or more than a 90-day relief. Currently, we have two billing cycles, and our business system isn't that robust. So from administrative perspective, we're suggesting that it apply to both billing cycles in terms of if council wishes to provide deferral of payments and/or relief in terms of overdue payments. That is, in a nutshell, again, what is before council is a relief period between April 1 and June 30, and that would apply only to late penalty charges. The report does indicate in terms of our utility payments, we do not have a significant number of late payments. We currently generate around $300 a month in late payment fees, and that's the amount of revenue that would be foregone during this. In addition, we expect most residents to continue paying, but it will create minor cash flow restrictions if residents decide to defer their payments to the end of the payment period of July 1. So we would lose a few dollars in interest, which should, has increased the net impact of the proposed program to around $2,500. This is directly related to this program. The province has also provided relief in terms of education payments. So overall, there won't be a negative cash flow situation for the county, but this particular initiative would create a minor reduction in cash flow and thus reduce earnings incomes. So that is for council's consideration. If there's any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Are there any questions from council for Mr. McKinnon? Any questions from the video conferencing side? Doesn't look like it. Okay, what's council's wishes? Deputy Reeve McGee?
I move to approve the deferment of penalties and policy directions on utility billings during the next 90 days.
Okay, we have a motion before us. We approve not charging late penalties or unpaid water, sewage, garbage billings, and other balances from the period of April 1 to June 30, which includes no cutting off services or non-payment during this period. Is that the way you would like that motion to read, Deputy Reeve?
Yes, that's much more accurate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion to the said motion? No, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thanks, Mr. McKinnon. Our next agenda item is 8.1 Three Hills Funding Request, and I think that's you, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. To you and council, the attached to this item is a letter that we received from the Town of Three Hills requesting funding to assist with upgrades and repairs at the Three Hills Aquatic Center. So they are applying for $200,000. The, and I think I've got an error in the item here, I said the town is requesting $500,000. That's inaccurate. They are requesting two, as per the letter. This request is in alignment with funding that the county has previously provided to some of our other urban partners. So specifically, the Town of Chorshu Village of Carbon and Village of Linden have all applied for similar funding. In the 2020 budget that council did approve, there is allotment for this money in there. So should council approve this, this figure is already built into the 2020 budget. It was put in there as a placeholder because council hadn't formally given approval to this. But if council does give approval, then we would release that portion of the funding. And so the, as I said, to summarize, this is in alignment with support that the county has given other municipalities, or at least the urbans that are within the, in the county. And this would, this would help the Town of Three Hills with upgrades to their aquatic center and swimming pool. And we do have the money already accounted for or already included in the approved 2020 budget. So we're just looking for council's formal approval for this as a way of releasing the funds.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Are there any questions from council? Counselor King?
So I'd make the motion that council approve the grant of $200,000 for the Town of Three Hills to be used for recreation facility upgrades.
Thank you. We have a motion before us. Is there any discussion to the motion that we have before us? Anything from video conferencing side? Doesn't look like it. Nothing here, so I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Okay, next agenda item, 8.2 Rocky View County Request for Comment. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. To you and council, the item before us is the Rocky, sorry, not the Rocky, Rocky View County is considering an application to Municipal Affairs to change their municipal status from municipal district to specialized municipality. So what they've indicated to us is that because of their unique blend of urban and rural development with different residential service needs across their many hamlets, farms, acreages, and country residential areas, they're looking at reforming as a specialized municipality just to give themselves some additional tools or different foundational aspects that allow them to deal with a purely urban area as well as a purely urban area within the same municipality. So there are a number of other municipalities in the province that have this designation. So areas like Strathcona County, Mackenzie County, Lacklubish, those areas, there's probably a few more, are specialized municipalities that are out there. So it's something that Rocky View is exploring, and as part of that is they're looking to create five residential and four business urban service areas. So again, it's just a tool that will enable them to better serve their, or they feel would better serve their ratepayers and the differences that they have from ratepayer to ratepayer. They, as part of the process, they're asking for, they've been asked to, they have been asked to ask their neighbors for comments on that, and administration's recommendation to council is that we send a letter to Rocky View noting that Neheal County has no concerns with their possible change in municipal classification.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Does council have any concerns? What are council's wishes? Counselor Christie?
I'll make the motion to direct administration to send a letter to the Rocky View County noting that Neheal County has no concerns with the possible changes in the municipal classifications.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion before us to direct administration to send a letter to Rocky View noting that Neheal has no concerns with their proposed possible changes in municipal classification. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none? Call the question. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously. All righty, we will now, how about if we take a short break? So I'm, yeah, we'll recess for a few minutes. Thank you. Alrighty, we will bring the meeting back to order. Everybody good on the video conferencing end? You can hear me fine? Yes, yes. Alrighty. Our next agenda item is 8.3, community grants. Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. To you and council, this item, the community grants to nonprofit organizations through policy 15-3, this is the first round. This is normally an item that goes to committee of the whole first, and that's as per policy, but with council's indulgence. We're asking that council give consideration to this item today. That's heavily related to the next item on your agenda today, which is to cancel the next committee of the whole meeting. Then we can, maybe I'll touch on that, is when we look at that, really this item is the only one that's on that next agenda. The other item that's on there, we can, we can, it's not critical, it's not time-sensitive, we can push off. And so in light of that, we're looking at having this item, with your indulgence, here for consideration today. With the, with the applications, we see several. Only the ones that were, that met the program eligibility have been forwarded to you. So there are a couple additional applications that we received. However, they didn't meet the grant eligibility for consideration under the program. So as per policy and previous discussion with council, those have not come forward to you. And I think there were two other ones, right, that fell into that category. The four that did are before you, and their, their applications are attached to the document. You'll see in each one that they're, they do have outlined there their cost-sharing component. So they're asking for funding from the county that they'll match themselves, either through a cash contribution or volunteer time. And the four are Three Hills Golf Club, $3,500, and they're looking for funding for replacement of fuel tanks. Three Hills Minor Baseball Association in the amount of $2,000, and they're looking for lockers and cages to do some of their, to course, to go along with some of the equipment management or access management to their, their facilities. Neale Minor Hockey is looking at just over $2,700. They're looking for smaller nets to facilitate their, some of their youth programs, particularly at the younger levels. And Three Hills Early Childhood Development is looking for outdoor playground equipment, and they're asking for the county's help to assist for half of that in the amount of $5,200. So again, this is round one. The application deadline was March 4th, and the total amount that's requested from the four groups is $13,432. In council's approved 2020 budget, council's allotted $50,000 for this program overall. And administration's recommendation is to approve the, to approve the, the grant applications as proposed. But again, that, that decision is ultimately up to, up to council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hogan. I guess, Counselor King.
I guess I'd like to ask the question. We've had a number of conversations around ownership of golf clubs, and so my question is, our policy states that we won't fund, where it's a municipally-owned asset, and so I am questioning the Three Hills Golf Club. Is it owned by the town of Three Hills or not? And if so, I don't think it's eligible under this program to receive grant funding.
So I'm told where the fuel tank is being located, that area is owned by the golf course. But if the golf, the ultimate ownership of the golf course itself, I don't know the answer to, to that. If the entire entity is owned, if there's a separate society, or if the entity is owned by the town, that would be a follow-up that we would have to do.
Counselor Christie.
I would think that the fuel tanks would be portable, so they wouldn't be owned by the town, they'd be owned by the golf club, because they wouldn't be tied to the title.
And the few, the fuel tanks are portable.
Well, I guess I have, I have a problem with that one, so it's up to council to decide what they wish, but certainly I, I won't be supportive of that grant.
Okay, how would you like to run this? Are we going to, I guess we'll, we'll do them one at a time, and we'll ask each counselor their thoughts. So I guess the first one would be the Three Hills Golf Club. They're looking for $3,500, replace fuel tanks. Start over to my right. What is your vote, Jim?
No.
Mr. King.
I, I am definitely a no.
I would say no.
I say yes.
I'd say yes. Counselor Penner.
I would say yes.
Counselor Keever.
I'm saying no.
The, okay, so that's four, three?
Yeah.
So it's lost.
It is.
Okay, we will now go on to Three Hills Minor Baseball Association. Start with you this time, Counselor Keever.
I guess I'm gonna have to say yes, but how much of these programs are even gonna run this year?
Well, hopefully it gets done this year. That is one of the requirements, so. Counselor Penner. That's, that was a yes?
Yeah, I mean, yes.
All right. Counselor Christie.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve.
Yes.
I would go yes. Counselor King.
I would be a yes.
And Counselor Hugo.
I'm a yes also.
Okay, so $2,000 was requested, $2,000 will be going that way. Neale Minor Hockey Association. Counselor Christie.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve.
Yes.
I will go yes. Counselor King.
I will be yes.
Counselor Hugo.
I have a question. These nets are gonna be used in Three Hills and Troschua Arena. What about the Torrington Arena? Do they have their own, or does Neale Minor Hockey not work out of the Torrington Arena?
Any counselor, or Deputy Reeve McGee.
From my experience, that was a couple of years ago now, but no, Neale Minor Hockey didn't use Torrington at that time, two years ago, and these are additional nets specific to the smaller children, so I don't think all the arenas will be using them.
Okay, what's your thoughts, Counselor Keever? Yes, sir. Yes. Counselor Penner.
Yes.
Okay, so 2732, purchase of smaller nets going to Neale Minor Hockey. Three Hills Early Childhood Society, $5,200. I guess I have a question right off the bat, and that would probably be to you. Mr. Hogan, what is a mud kitchen?
Yeah, the, exactly what a mud kitchen is, is I do not know. The, I do understand that it is just a, again, it's, it's an outdoor play apparatus, but to describe it to you, I, I am unable to do that.
Until the ground thaws. Okay, Deputy Reeve McGee.
I can't speak to the specific one they're talking about, but I, I served on that board with that society for quite some time, and the province really pushes outdoor play. So basically, it's formalizing what we did as kids, making mud pies and playing in the grass and finding natural crafting projects, so that you're outdoors using nature.
And send them home dirty. Okay.
Yeah, it is, it is a type of apparatus. It is to facilitate that. If you're looking at it, you'd see. Pretty much, yeah.
There's no takeout.
Okay, with that clarification, I guess, well, I'll start. I'll go with a yes. Deputy Reeve McGee.
Yes.
Counselor Christie.
Yes.
Counselor Keever.
Yes.
Counselor Penner.
Yes.
Counselor Hugo.
Yes.
Counselor King.
I'm a yes.
Okay, so that is, that one goes through. So we would need a motion that we approve round one, community grants to nonprofit organizations, funding the following organizations. Would someone like to make a motion? Counselor King.
So I'd make the motion that council approve funding through the community grants to nonprofit organizations, funding the following organizations. Three Hills Minor Baseball Association for $2,000, Neale Minor Hockey Association for $2,732, and Three Hills Early Childhood Society for $5,200.
Thank you. We have a motion before us. Is there any discussion to the motion before the question is called? No, 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 no. Alrighty, call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Our next agenda item is 8.4, cancellation of the committee of the whole meeting. Mr. Hogan.
Hey, Mr. Reeve. To you and council, as I've, as explained as part of the previous item, is when we're looking at the upcoming agenda for the committee of the whole meeting, it was fairly light. We had two items scheduled, one of them you've already dealt with. The second one was just regarding the procedural bylaw and was an introductory discussion, which is not time-sensitive and doesn't need to come forward at that time if we choose not to. And so we're making the recommendation that in light of particularly COVID-19 and wanting to minimize the amount of gatherings and such, that we formally cancel the, the upcoming committee of the whole meeting.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hogan from council? Okay, Counselor King.
I guess I'd just like to make a comment, and I am supportive of the idea of canceling this meeting. I, I did feel that in the budget processes here, I felt that myself personally, I would have liked a little more informal conversation around some of the things where, in the final budget, and a committee of the whole meeting would have allowed us to do that. So although I'm supportive of not having this committee of the whole meeting, I think that there is a purpose to committee of the whole, and I guess I would encourage not the loss of that concept, for sure.
Yeah, and we.
Mr. Hogan.
We, through you, Mr. Reeve, we, we agree as well. When we made the recommendation, one of the things we looked at is if there were other items. You know, the agenda was looking light, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't, we didn't want to manufacture work for you guys for the sake of having a meeting, but it is something that we looked at, as if there were other things ready to come forward, if they were draft policies or discussions to have. And just the timing of it, there wasn't anything pertinent that was coming forward. But we do agree administratively that they are, they are a benefit as well.
Deputy Reeve McGee.
I move that we cancel the committee of the whole meeting scheduled for April 21st, 2020.
Okay, we have a motion before us to cancel the committee of the whole that was scheduled Okay, we have a motion before us to cancel the committee of the whole that was scheduled for the 21st, 2020. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as not, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Skipping right along here. We have, our next agenda item is council and committee reports. And Canadian Badlands Association has a, we have a, we have the minutes here. Are there any questions? Comments, concerns? Deputy Reeve McGee?
I attended the AGM last month. I, it was an excellent pre-education opportunities with that event as well. In the annual agenda meeting, our agenda was very short and sweet, so we moved through things quickly. But the biggest change that I think you'd be interested to hear about is it was requested that better notes were taken on the regular meetings that they have throughout the year, so we can better understand the validity of this particular group. Because there isn't a lot of conversation amongst all of our representatives about what they do through the year. And so we can see better communication coming forward is what's come as the biggest change.
Okay, are there any other comments, questions, concerns? What is council's wish? Counselor King?
I'd make the motion that council received that council and committee reports for information are as presented.
Okay, we have a motion before us. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Okay, we have our council follow-up action list report. Any questions? Deputy Reeve McGee?
I would like to move that we receive the report regarding the council follow-up action list for, for information as presented.
Okay, we have a motion before us to receive for information as presented. All those in favor? And that is carried. And our next item is to go into closed session. Would someone like to make a motion? Counselor Christie?
A move that we go into closed session?
Motion's been made to go into closed session to deal with lands, section 25.
Unless you have a mouse.
You don't have to go that much.
He can butt down anywhere, you guys.
Yeah. Pretty positive. Look at that, man. I think that there's nobody outside waiting and itching to come in. Should've said, "I'm back in session a little sooner," now I gotta wait another 20 seconds.
Yeah, in this case here, the building is still locked, right?
Yeah.
All right. So we are back in session. Uh, we have one motion coming out of closed session. Deputy Reeve McGee.
I move to approve the applicant's request to submit a subdivision application in order to purchase his access and yard.
All right, very good. We have a motion before us. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And at this point in time, 10:41, I will adjourn today's meeting. Thank you everyone and stay safe. Hopefully COVID-19 doesn't last until COVID-21 shows up.
Thanks, Deb. See ya, Glenn.
Thanks, Deb. See ya, Glenn.